All right, we are calling to order the Planning Board meeting for Tuesday, February 15th at 6:00 PM. We have a quorum.
You're only missing Richard Holzberg.
Okay, so we're missing Rich. All right, um, has everyone had a chance to look at the agenda?
Yes.
All right, any comments, questions, changes, and if not, would anyone like to make a motion?
I'd like to note that it looks very fancy in the new system, Austin, well done, and we'll move to approve the minutes as presented.
Michael LaVell seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, great. What about Ken, looks like he's trying to talk. All right, so moved, I'm assuming. All right, so moved. All right, adoption of the, wait, adoption of the previous minutes. Did everyone have a chance to actually read the minutes from last, the last meeting? Any changes, comments, questions? All right, if someone could make a motion to approve, if there are no changes? Michael LaVell made the motion. All right, Michael made the initial motion, if you'd like to second, John.
I'll second, yeah.
Great, thank you. All in favor, if you could take yourself off mute? Aye.
Aye.
I can't tell if it's Ken or Kent.
That was Kent saying that, out of his voice.
All right, so moved, I think.
Yeah, one, two, three.
I thought we were gonna be able to vote on this system.
Not yet, that's not been turned on yet.
Okay.
I ain't got that far.
All right, uh, public comment, do we have anyone signed up for public comment?
I have received none.
Okay, and these two folks here are guests.
Are applicants.
Applicants, okay, perfect, then we will. Is there anyone joining in via WebEx that would like to make a public comment?
Just to note, Richard just joined us.
All right, so, welcome, Rich. Never is. Well, some of us go to work every day, you know, outside of our homes. Anyone online have any comments, a public comment for the Planning Board? All right, first item of discussion. Discussion and, discussion and consideration of recommendation of the Heritage at Marvin subdivision sketch plan.
All right, so this was presented to you guys back during the January meeting. During that time, the applicant was still waiting to hold their P I N, their Public Involvement Meeting. They held it actually the week after, that's the first requirement before, I guess you guys formally have to make a recommendation to council. They held that on January 26th, I think was the date, it was Wednesday, Wednesday after our last planning board meeting. Had a pretty good turnout, had two sessions roughly about 10 to 15, I think, for each session. Some of the, you know, questions, comments, that really came up, or one, you know, any, any type of traffic, traffic impact as well as school impact, and the question about, I think view shed buffer was one that, that came up. Reducing the view shed buffer of the 285 foot along Newtown to potentially offset a greater buffer there at the backside of the property that abuts some of the Meadowlark residential lots. That is something that the applicant, that the applicant is aware of, however, that's, once again, that is a decision done by council during their approval. And I will let, you kind of, we kind of talked about that, you wanna kind of add in on that a little bit?
Yeah, so we're in, we're in the middle of working our grading study in those 29 lots. That grading study may actually, how we have to tie some of those backyards and preserve some of those trees, may actually push those houses further away. If we don't push it far enough away to give us an equal offset to the existing houses, then we'll go back to council and ask for reduction in that front view shed buffer to offset those houses along that lot line. But it looks like on our preliminary, some of our preliminary grading studies, it looks like it's gonna push those houses another 25 to 30 feet further away and then tie those slips in, so it'll be something we'll discuss at the council meeting, but we're more than open to working with that.
We don't need to wait for that?
No.
The site plan would change, would not?
Yes and no. It, it would, the sketch plan can still be, basically, the sketch plan in itself can still be approved because it's still for the 29 lots and based off of that generic site plan. When that preliminary plaque and construction drawings come, it still does come back to you guys as long as it does not significantly change their site plan, as in one ever increase the lots or some type of thing that would have to then go back through a different process. If it's still under the same intent and umbrella of the original approved sketch plan, then it can still follow on the. Yeah.
So as long as it stays by right?
Correct. And that's kind of, once again, so as long as it doesn't change anything, then it would continue down this same application's middle process. Just to kind of summarize again, it's for 29 total lots on 47 acres, so it's roughly yielding 0.61 dwelling units per acre. It's done as a conservation subdivision, so it's 14.86 acres of that, of the total acreage will be yielded as conservation slash open space, which does comply with our ordinance. Other than that, I mean, that's kind of, you know, it's straightforward by right, complies with our ordinance. And, you know, I'll open it up to any questions for either myself or the developer at this time.
I couldn't get the, I believe it's the minutes.
It wasn't loading on mine either.
Yeah, I couldn't get the minutes open, so I couldn't see if there were comments captured there from those two meetings. I was planning on attending, but I had to put my, one of my pets to sleep, so.
That is weird. Okay, I do, I did, I were, I was able to get them to open on my laptop.
Did you have to open the PDF?
Yeah.
And then you open it and the other minutes?
Yeah, they were, I would open them on my, on my laptop.
Here's what you get when we get it, you know.
And just click that. Just click it though.
Oh, I was starting to, no, I just get Adobe Reader now.
When did I click? I clicked something.
I have Adobe, so I don't know.
Yeah, exactly, I don't want it again.
Click, did I go back to that again?
You have to click it as attachment.
I'm just really looking for what the, are there, were there any takeaways?
We're just loading differently.
Were there any takeaways that we hadn't already discussed, or anything that kind of came up?
No, the, like I said, that view shed buffer was one thing, and that's something that we did talk about actually in our last planning board meeting, that, that, once again, they comply with what our ordinance states, however, they can ask for a reduction in that 285 foot potentially offset, that's still, once again, a council decision, as well as, you know, being kind of mentioned, getting into some of the grading, some of that might need to shift anyway. There, there was some, some discussion, I think, of utility.
They asked you about the utility route, one of the adjoining.
Yeah, that's where I was getting ready to say, Hunter and Austin, I think, as I recall, it was just clarification exactly where the, where the utility easement was and how it was routed, et cetera. I think, as I recall it.
I think it was, one of the adjoining had, had mentioned that there was a wetland, which we had shown on our sketch plan. We've already had our delineation done on that, so.
Yeah, and then the other thing is that, those were the biggest, kind of, quite, once again, other than generic questions about compliance with the ordinance, traffic, school, and stuff like that. That, that was really, they, I mean, obviously evaluate, or the projected valuations of the homes, which if you wanna ask that, I'll let you ask the guy that, that has that answer, but I can't remember.
Did they not get that answer?
No, they did, they did. I was just, I can't remember, it was.
It'll be in the high sevens, low eights to start, yeah.
But other than that, no, I mean, that was kind of the straightforward of that. The other thing I'll mention is that this then went to PRG at their February meeting. They recommended approval. I think the one comment there was a potential sidewalk slash nature trail connection throughout that utility easement from the development to the roundabout, which that was something that the developer agreed to kind of look to, for, or look into, basically, as long as that easement, as long as it doesn't, once the utilities are put in and stuff, and that they have the room, that's something they would add into the plan.
This is, Ken, I, this may be a dumb question, but does this assume that the traffic, so it goes with the group?
What do you mean? The, the roundabout?
It doesn't rely on it.
Correct. The roundabout, yeah, the roundabouts are different, I mean, that's some through NC DOT. But like the roundabout, there, none of the, this is, I guess, assuming that the roundabout, it would be put in as, as based off of their plan.
I mean, they, yeah.
I wonder what'll break ground first?
I don't, I don't think any, their plans don't hinge on the NC DOT roundabout plans. I believe you also, all of your utilities and all of your, it's all coming over regardless of whether.
Yeah, we're working on an approachment agreement, if the roundabout doesn't come in, we'll still be able to build the 100% of the existing road.
Yeah, so it's not, it's not, yeah, it doesn't hinge on the roundabout.
But just to clarify, NC DOT said that the roundabout is moving ahead according to schedule.
According to their schedule.
Yeah, I didn't wanna.
According to the new, the fifth schedule?
Yeah, I don't wanna get down that path, but I do at least wanna mention that.
I guess my other question is what happens if it doesn't, if we don't get the roundabout approved? Are we still okay?
The project's been, the project's been approved, it's just been delayed multiple times.
Yeah, if the, this, this development and the roundabout, like if the roundabout gets delayed even further, this development can, will still process i- if approved. The roundabout has no kind of, it, it could help, but at the same time, it does not hinder the development itself, and vice versa.
Well, clarification on that, I would think that even if the roundabout ended up being only a three-leg roundabout instead of four as presented, I don't think that would affect this development at all, I believe.
Stop blaspheming, stop. No, it would not, but we hope that's not gonna be the case.
Yeah, I know, I know, I'm just.
Don't even put that negative energy out into the, out into the universe, John.
Yeah, he was just throwing out all the contingencies, and that was just, you know, one other potential, potential contingency.
Is there any other questions, comments, anything else you wanna add?
All right, if, if no one on the Planning Board has any additional questions, I guess, or any more discussion, we would move.
We just need a recommendation, I mean, yeah.
All right, does anyone have a, a motion?
I'm going to approve as presented.
All right, Michael LaVell's moved to approve, anyone have a second?
I'll second.
John, all right, any more discussion before we vote? All right, all in favor? All right, perfect, that was done. All right, so moved. You're welcome, good luck at council.
Yeah, good luck.
So this will be.
I get to stay late most of them, I'm gonna.
Run for the hills.
Yeah, so this will be on council's agenda for March.
Thank you, guys, appreciate it.
For their, for their consideration.
All right, and so, so not the sketch plans that are approved by us, if they need to adjust their site plan, that would go through, that come back to us, because it's.
Yeah, if, and I guess, yeah, just if there is any, I guess if you wanna add, if we're talking about if a potential heritage district's submitted or anything, yes, that would, that would reset the process for them. But any then for this.
I mean, just like if that, if they need, if they need to push some of those lots forward in that.
As long as it does not cha, as long as it does not change, once again, the number of lots or kind of like any density, any of the major, I guess, from an ordinance standpoint, then it still falls under that umbrella, and those are just changes that are done through that preliminary plant construction phase. It would, so at that point, yes, it would, I guess, come back for you guys, but it's still under that same initial approval from the sketch.
Okay, so then.
Which you see in the construction plan approvals, when you're going through the construction.
And I wouldn't, and that has to be noted too, on those plans, if those changes.
I just wasn't sure, like, if they ask for the, the front buffer reduction to give themselves more room on the back end, if that is a special, like a variance or.
It's just a, that's.
You just sit on the construction plan?
Yeah. Anything council would have to approve it.
Yeah.
Okay, cool, all right, thanks.
Run while you have a chance.
You're already got your yes.
All right, moving on to item number two, discussion recommendation of special use permit application 21-12787, pool in rear yard that abuts a side yard, all of our favorites. Hunter?
All right, so we have a special use permit application for a pool in the, I guess, rear yard that does abut a side yard, and it's located at 2101 Highland Forest Drive, that is in Weddington Chase. Basically, our ordinance requires any type of, when a pool abuts a side yard like this, that the, they must receive a special use permit approval. Kind of getting into it, they meet all the requirements, I, I can really kind of dive into it if need be, but they'll, as you can see with the application materials, there is already existing screening and buffering as well as additional that will be put in. The placement of the pool meets our setback is, you know, exceeds that, as in meets the minimum setback requirements from the side property lines as well as the rear. And once again, all, their whole proposal is compliant by our standards, however, just based off of our ordinance, they must receive a special use permit applica, or special use permit approval to have the pool.
I just had two quick questions. The equipment will be up against the house, that EQ, is that, is that where the equipment's gonna go?
Correct.
Okay, and then is, are the existing shrubs enough, or are they gonna have to add additional to meet?
The existing shrubs do suffice that, I mean, if you pull the, the, if you look at, like, from Stonehaven, which is the side, which, the house that abuts the side yard is on Stonehaven. There is a good amount of tree shrubs around that area. The only other thing that they have to do, which is proposed on the plan, is to do fencing, which you can, you'll, you'll see that on the plan, they have to fence that in, but the existing shrub and landscaping does, does meet our, our ordinance requirements.
Karen, you on with Kelly, Kelly's question, I don't know how old the Google Maps is, the, you know, when I pulled it up earlier, the shrubbery on the right-hand property line did not appear as dense as on the left and the rear, and maybe it's grown in by now, I don't know how old that, that photo was.
Hey, John, I live there, I drive past them every day and every night, and the shrubbery that's existing is extremely thick.
Okay.
It's not, it's cypress, so it's covered year-round.
Okay, I said, I know that this photo is, you know, several years old, and that was the only thing I, you know, at least noticed.
No comments from HOA or neighbors?
No, which at this time, so I, the special use permit hearing will be at council on March 8th. Those letters will go out next week. Which at that time, once again, that, those questions, comments will be considered at that, then I do believe either.
Who's caller number?
Potentially the applicant and/or the property owner were either gonna be present, they might have been, I don't know. But from my understanding, I actually do think that, that they have talked to that neighbor. Once again, I don't have that written, that can be a part of the recommendation. But, but with that being said, the, all adjoining property owners will be mailed next week for the, for their public hearing at the council meeting.
But that's not a requirement.
Correct.
No, that's, that's always mine, as long as there's no comments from the HOA or any neighbors.
Which they, they submitted with me, which is something that I don't think a lot, they actually submitted me the HOA already, the HOA application with their special use permit application, and.
Were they approved, or is they just submitted the, what they submitted?
Not 100%, because it, it could be, I'm not 100% sure on that. I do know that some was submitted, but once again, we don't enforce HOA, and HOA doesn't enforce ours, so it's, it could be like they could be waiting to get approval from the village before they, they approve it.
But we can, we can approve with.
Yeah, cuz they did.
Negative comments from HOA or neighbors.
Yeah, cuz we can approve it, and if HOA turns it down, then it's, it's likely we're not gonna, it's not gonna happen anyway. But yeah, the, like I said, the application submittal as well as the pool itself is compliant with all, with all our standards and requirements.
It's a nice pool.
Yeah, I made, I made sure they had a rendering in there for you guys.
That's one of my requests.
Yeah.
So you knew that was coming.
I told her, I said, renderings are great, yep.
Not required, but great. Anyone else online have any questions or comments before we move to approve? All right, anyone wanna make a motion?
I'll make a motion, that would you go ahead and approve this as submitted?
I will second that.
Great, all in favor, say aye. Can we hear Kent?
That hurt him.
Okay. It's hard to, to lighten up. All right, so, yeah, that's probably better, any knows? All right, so moved. Moving on.
Fun fact, failure to vote is counted as a yes, so.
Yeah, that's true. All right, discussion of zoning text amendment application 2022-1.
Okay, so just a little, you know, background here is, as we kind of discussed at our last meeting, looking at updating our ordinances and, and regulations to kind of either be clearer, updated with the time, so on. This was one that was kind of brought to my attention and had an application filed. And so that's what's being presented tonight. Stephanie, if you wanna introduce yourself, the applicant's Ms. Stephanie Lyons, she lives out at, do you wanna say your. Providence Estates. Just a little bit more further background is basically, Providence Estates is a older subdivision, minimum of all five acre lots for the most part.
Two to five.
Two to five. And this kind of was brought where her neighbor had some chickens and roosters, sorry, I'm just making sure that's an emergency. And, you know, then when we kind of started diving into from a code enforcement standpoint, it was very unclear, as well as then it kind of brought the greater attention to, hey, our regulations need to be updated and kind of clear in general on all type of agriculture uses. Stephanie's provided a great application submittal here with kind of, you know, what the existing text says, what her requests are, and some justification. And I'll, I'll let you kind of jump in and kind of give a little bit more background, and then we can go through the ordinance that she's presented.
So just a little background on myself, we've lived in Providence Estates for 20 years. I grew up on a lot of land with most of these animals that are in here, so I understand all this very well. What we've realized is, so the purpose of this is to establish some guidance on responsible ownership. It gets down to the responsible ownership of livestock. There's good animal husbandry and there's bad animal husbandry, and this is to kind of give some guidelines to people on, this is responsible animal husbandry. It kind of defines what the allowable livestock is, limits on the type and the species, the containment of the animals, which is very important, removal of excrement, and the containment of the feed as to minimize rodent infestations. And so each category we go through kind of follows that structure, addresses each of those issues, or subjects. And so I, I guess I would, I'd just like to say that, you know, being here for such a long time, I've seen lots of councils and boards, and I think a common theme with Marvin is that everyone has tried to make this a very nice area, preserve the beauty of the area. It's, we have larger lots, whether it's the neighborhoods, or there's still some neighborhoods that have even larger lots with, that can have animals. So it still has a small town, even though it's getting very developed here, it still has a small-town rural feel, which I think is fantastic. And whenever we have friends come down from Charlotte or other areas, they always comment on how beautiful this area is. They're amazed by how beautiful it is and that it's still left. I think in, so there's a, like I said, there's a handful of neighbors, neighborhoods that still have two to five, some have more acre tracts. They've been owned by the same families for years, like, pretty much once people move in, they don't move out until they retire or gone assisted living. So what we're starting to see is, so the people have been here for a long time, you know, they, just as Marvin, they take a lot of pride in the appearance of their property, what's on their property, whether it's offensive or not. And what we're seeing as, as people move out, the people that move in may not understand kind of how Marvin is and how we care about how everything looks. And, and I would just say that, especially in our neighborhood, even when houses came on the market, they were on the market for a long time. It would take a long time to sell a property with a lot of acreage because it just wasn't what people were looking for. It's a lot of work, you, you have to want that lifestyle. Since 2020, you know, the houses are coming on the market, and I don't know what Valhalla and the other neighborhoods are, but they come on in our neighborhood and they're gone in a day for over asking, which historically hasn't happened. So it's been the past two years that's been happening. So we're getting people that really wanna be here. And then what we're also seeing is that the people aren't from this area, or they might not be used to, you know, they get this large tract land, they feel like it's truly a rural area, like you would find in other parts of the country, and they think you can do whatever you want, you can have whatever animal you want, let it run loose, have as many as you want. You know, not everyone, but you, you're seeing more cases of not responsible animal husbandry. So what, what we've discovered in, in looking and talking about what Hunter and I have been dealing with is there really are no ordinances in Marvin for any livestock keeping. Marvin mirrored Union County, and Union County doesn't spell out what's allowed and what's not allowed because there's a lot of large tract land. So on our property, for example, we have five acres, I could have as many cows as I want, I could have as many horses as I want, I could have hogs if I want them, all that, which, you know, they all in their own way create a noise or an odor nuisance, or, you know, they tear down fences, they get loose. So what we're trying to do with this document is start the process and the conversation to try to get some sort of parameters in place so that as people come in from cities or other areas that are very strict and have a lot of ordinances, so that they don't just come in and do whatever they want, have a chick, a huge chicken house, or a ton of cattle, or something. So again, just trying to start the conversation, let's keep the character of Marvin, responsible animal ownership, good animal husbandry. This probably isn't the final version, but it's just to stab at some guidelines.
Where did you get, a lot of times when we're redoing HOA, you know, information, we'll go and pull, you know, ordinances and things to look at?
Yes, so I looked at Waxaw cuz it's close to us, I looked at Davidson because Davidson kind of has a similar character as us. And then I looked at Gastonia because it's a suburb of Charlotte that still has a, a large rural part.
Yeah, I'll mention, yeah, she, she, we kind of, we, this process started with at least the text minute probably about three or four weeks ago. And we met and once again, I don't like to recreate the will. I like to try, once again, see what other places have. And uh she she definitely identified those and those are very good examples. I will also mention that I have dealt, I kind of have dealt with this in my previous job. The issue is, is like, it is kind of the what best fits Marvin, and that's what we're trying to get here tonight is that you know, previously, the way I would do it in my previous jobs is that regulate, you know, domestic animal keeping or something like that. And basically, it would outlaw all agriculture animals outside of horses and chickens for the most part. Um unless you were a bona fide uh bona fide farm, which is a special tax exemption, there there's five ways to be classified as a bona fide farm and the most simplest ways to have that tax exemption from the county. As well as in or unless you were identified as some type of commercial agricultural use or something like that. The problem with our ordinance is it is kind of unclear. It's also unclear and kind of dated when you look at the um accessory use and structure, especially for agriculture buildings. You know, so when this all kind of came up, it's like, you know, this is a chance to really, I think, clarify a lot of things when it comes to these agricultural uses and mainly as accessory uses. You know, one thing that I know a lot of, you know, Marvin residents have is horses. Well, I I probably get one or two calls a month of people buying property, hey, I wanna have horses. Well, it really doesn't, I I outside of maybe the sixty feet, it doesn't say like you don't have a general standard, which the general standard is that one horse per acre and so on. And once again, for so from my point of view, from an enforcement standpoint, I can tell them what they have, but then really, what does that mean? And 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 like, is it really, and how can we strengthen this? How can we make it clear? So when we do have people move in and they ask me questions on if it's horses or chickens or whatever it is, we have regulations in place that are clear, straight to the point. That's one easy to read as either if it's staff, residents, whoever, as well as an easy to enforce.
Well, how do we go about, I mean, I'm I'm in favor. I like the idea and everything, but are the existing people who have animals, are they exempt? Do they grandfathered in or do we make them upgrade all of these?
That's where it's, it depends on how we do it. And I, we kind of met prior to this meeting and that's what I was explaining is that depending on how far we go, as in, let's say, you know, she's proposing like outlawing roosters, like I I can't go, one, I'm I don't have the time to go around and see who's got roosters or not, but if I get a complaint, if I get a complaint, it's still, you know, it's kind of that nonconforming grandfathering thing. However, one, this will help obviously any new, any new things, but then two.
Change of ownership, that would be.
But going, but then backdating, it depends, there's gonna be kind of, it's not necessarily a gray area, but then like how strict, like if we really, if like I said, outlawing roosters or the amount of chickens or like the coop.
The way the food's kept, you know.
Certain things like that, like we can regulate and enforce because it it's already, it's already basically an issue from our nuisances and animal thing, but then we don't have guidelines really to enforce, and that's where that would kind of come in. But then from specific like numbers and so on, it's, that's gonna, I've kind of, I've briefly talked to the attorney about it. I mean, we'll have to just be be careful. I mean, a lot of this stuff and the way that we did it in my previous job, once again, it all started, always starts, you know, with a rooster or or some type of foul keeping or something. And uh you know, some of those, some of those ordinances that I previously worked with had no thing mentioned about agricultural keeping or any of that. So take that old saying, like if it's not express, if it's not um permitted, then it's or if it's never stated or anything, then it's pretty much a mission, not permitted through a mission. Well, we already do have agricultural uses or some type of thing on the book, so once again, like I said, that's where we're gonna have to get, you know, just careful with how we do it as well as um then getting into the nitty gritty of the enforcement.
I mean, we have animal breeding. I'm sure there's in Union County, there's dogs that are bred. I mean, and we're saying no animal breeding? No person may lay, clear, construct, or operate any animal breeding, growing, or feeding establishment for commercial purposes within the village. Wouldn't that fall under that?
I think that's specific to Marvin.
That's the very last one.
It's the very last sentence. Actually, I had a question about that as well cuz um I know we've got, I'm pretty sure we've got folks in Marvin who are like keeping sheep and llama.
I mean, that would just be.
I know there was a pig loose in our neighborhood not long ago. It doesn't belong to one of our neighbors, but for whatever reason, this guy's got out.
This is not dogs. Yeah, that's a whole different. This is just livestock. So and that would get into like your chicken houses, like you have Monroe, which I don't know if you've ever been out there in summer. It's very, very offensive.
If we were to put this in action tomorrow, what kind of kickback would we get from people in the village?
Well, and that's where we have, that's.
Who's this, who's this gonna affect? Not gonna affect me.
That's where.
Well, let let me, you know, basically, you know, starting off, you know, forty years ago, we had some some wage reforms in this area. But uh even today, I think that we still have some larger tracts with uh, you know, that can be designated as farms. And so this is, the way this is written is I see it, so the people who own twenty or thirty acres are lumped into the same group as someone who owns maybe one and a half acres. And I don't, I think those are totally different things.
Yeah, and the way Waxahaw handles it, twenty acres is a bona fide farm. So it would not, that's the way Waxahaw handles it.
Yeah, and John, you know, I'll kind of add on to that is that that was one hurdle that, you know, I I told um, starting this process that I I saw. Because if you do anything through zoning, then it applies to either those specific zoning districts or the village as a whole. Well, the way that I would do it in this previous is typically you have three-ish, I mean, two to four maybe um different zoning districts residentially, as in if it's the the size of land and or, you know, sometimes like mobile home, whatever. Well, here you've got mainly one residential district, and then you do have uh Weddington Chase that's pretty much identified as residential Union County. It's still the same regulations. It's just that if we had different zoning districts that kind of broke up based off uh lot size to an extent, that's where, yeah, I think this could be easier to enforce. However, that's where we have to then in these regulations specifically talk about those acreages and things because we wanna be careful in making sure that we don't I guess upset and or come across these, especially with these larger tracts uh or these existing uses. You know, that's, I'm trying to think of like certain examples. I mean, we kind of went through some of the subdivision.
I can't think of a large trap. Where where's the large trap that's in Marvin? Cuz there were some that we were talking about that aren't in Marvin.
The the property right here on the corner of Marvin and Newtown is seventeen point eight acres and they have like, you know, the horse riding arena and stuff like that. Most of the other properties that have some type of ex, I mean, this is basically as of right now, cuz don't you have horses?
In our neighborhood, I I don't.
You don't, okay. Anybody that currently on a residential track that has any type of horse chickens, that's just considered an accessory use or accessory, you know, agricultural use. And so um that's what we're really trying to get into the nitty gritty with on that the keeping of like, what's the word? What is the term that we used earlier? Basically, domestic livestock or kind of keeping, I mean, animal keeping, there's different terminologies.
And so and so the character of Marvin, what you typically see, and you can drive down Waxahaw Marvin and see it, it's kind of, it's one of the most beautiful things about Marvin is you'll see a farm, a barn with a pasture and there's like two horses in it. And then, you know, there's another one, it's not in Marvin, but it's, you know, beautiful with the sheep and the donkeys or whatever. It's to to just keep it reasonable, because if you get twenty horses in on some of these, it becomes a muddy lot. And there's no beauty to it. So I'd say what you typically.
Do you have that in Marvin? Or you're just afraid?
Not yet, we can't.
That's what, that's what, that's what you're trying to do is prevent people from coming in.
And it might be the.
We don't have any abuses that if you put this in, that you're aware of that if we put this in, all of a sudden, we gotta go knock on doors and force anything.
Most of the people, and I'd say the character of Marvin with with horses in general is it's a family that lives, there's a a few neighborhoods with larger tracts and it's families with horses that they ride for their families, so smaller.
We said, we call it personal use. Like that's our neighborhood. That's how we, that's how we control it as we say. For person, we say equine because we do have a couple of donkeys and we say for personal use. And uh we do actually now have um they uh things around chickens because they weren't allowed and now they are, but we have pretty strict restrictions.
And that's what I'm, yeah, that's exactly what we're trying to achieve here is that, one, yeah, just any type of livestock domestic keeping, if it's horses, whatever. I mean, we can, through this process and we can, you know, if we really wanna nitpick and kind of pick out what animals to allow and not allow, I mean, I I, the general standard is typically, like I said, from an animal keeping standpoint, horses and chickens are really the two that always are regulated and or then everything else is outlawed unless you're, like I said, a com, either commercial or bona fide agricultural um use. Cuz we don't wanna get into.
And I have one question. Are are these um guidelines that are presented here, are they based on another, these guidelines where they've been committed successfully?
So everything that's in the packet was submitted from the applicant herself. This is all the work that she kind of did. Now, we we kind of discussed, so it was looking at those three ordinances, I think you talked to.
So I looked at Waxahaw, Davidson, and Gastonia. And when you look at those three towns, they're all written in a very similar manner, kind of like how I laid out here. Some of them get into more detail and they're more restrictive. They have to have, they have to be permitted.
And there was some language in there that, and I I've been trying to find it, um where it felt like animals did need to be permitted, or at least, you know, cuz like, like, just uh language as uh livestock is allowed, the livestock we kept on track, well, no, that's not it. Shoot.
Everything, everything in black is existing. That's our language.
Correct.
Horses and other.
Red is what you propose. Okay, that's.
Correct, and and I mean.
What about the blueberries? Wouldn't one, I see that.
Oh, it's whatever.
The the blue was.
That's the Marvin colors, it.
Yeah, on our.
That's not you.
Yeah, okay.
So arta, Article F says horses and other equine are allowed if the property owner demonstrates the following will be met. And then it gives, it lists out five things that need to happen. So um while I absolutely agree with these five things, you know, right now, there's no way and and I don't see it um spelled out in this language yet. Like, how will we even know if someone obtains an animal or or gets an animal? Do you know what I mean? Like.
Probably reporting.
Well, and that's where, that's where I see this in the long run. Like I said, it's mainly from an enforcement standpoint. One, having the regulations in place and me being able to tell people what they are is one thing. But as um as Stephanie kind of mentioned is that sometimes people come in and I and I've had it happen where, well, they will say, well, we thought we lived in Waxahaw or we live in the county and it says this, this, and this. Well, I tell you, you live in Marvin and this, these are our regulations. But with that being said, it's like this ordinance is mainly going to be a kind of a complaint base or if she drives it, as well as still where I can get ahead of it anytime, because trust, like I said, it happens about once a month. A realtor calls me saying, hey, I have a client interested in this. They wanna do chickens or something. What are your regulations on that? Regulations?
Is there any registration of animals?
So Waxahaw does. I can't remember where they, Gastonia does. I think Davidson does. A lot of.
Something you uh.
I mean, that's an adminis, that's a lot of administration, administrative. And some of them struggle, but they have permits. You pay, you're revoked.
Well, we we put, we put fees on everything, don't we, one day?
Kind of nickel and dime everyone's death.
Well, I mean, this wouldn't be, this would only be to the people that have animals. Wouldn't be, it would be a use, it would be a usage tax, I guess, or a usage fee. If you have animals, you pay for them. That's not for us to say, but I mean, that would, you know, and then that would restrict them if they have, you're allowed twenty horses on twenty acres. They got twenty-one, that would be a fine.
Correct. And well, and that's, that's honestly, though, that's what we're trying to do is that we're trying to.
Know they have twenty acres to be, or twenty horses to be given.
Well, it gets more to where the more animals you have on a certain amount of acres, it starts to become a nuisance from the mud, the odor.
Sound.
They come, go through the fences, yeah, sound. Um so it's really just the this is minimally restrictive with having something in place that you can enforce.
And yeah, and for tonight, so since there is a formal application placed, this this now means that it just now once again has to be considered by council. You guys can not recommend it, but it still will be voted on by council. It's the, it's the applicant's right um to do that. However, the recommendation does not have to be made tonight. The kind of intent was to start having this discussion because I want to know, once again, some of you guys have lived here for, I mean, a long time, a lot of you guys are in the area. It's that some of this, you know, this is what she has put together. I wanna get feedback and then my plan is for our next meeting is I'm going to then have a kind of my report slash maybe some recommendations. But there's, I mean, once again, I wanna kind of figure out, you know, where we're at here, even when we're getting into some of the proposals, the recommendations.
I think that's a great idea because what I told you before the meeting started, this was, this is the one where I wanted to hear, you know, the stories, the information on it because I didn't tackle this clearly enough uh prior to this to to have any recommendation on this. I think it's a great start and I'd love to table it and give everybody a whole month to kind of review it now that we know what we're what we're after. I really didn't know what we were after while we were on.
And um so if you look at most of the towns around us, except for Waxahaw, most of them, when you look at their animal ordinances, they copied Union County, which worked.
You're saying that's not good enough.
Well, it worked back then because we we weren't that different, you know. But now, yeah, so um Weddington and Wesley Chapel don't have anything in place. Waxahaw does. I didn't go any further than that.
What's the matter with roosters?
They're, they are allowed.
Would you like to hear?
No, no, we have one in, we have one in our neighborhood, but he's he's not a morning rooster. He's like a ten, he's a sleepy rooster, so he gets up at ten.
Yeah, and I guess the thing is too, as I was telling Hunter.
It's Marvin's rooster. He works at home.
He's retired.
Given.
A teenager.
Current environment where, just the reality of the situation we're in, there are people out there who think they have to have their own roost horses. So this is going to be coming up more and more. And I was telling Hunter, I know of five people right now that because of what's going on in the world, they're getting, they're building a coop and they're getting a bunch of chickens and they're gonna have, they're gonna be like self-sufficient, which in theory, sounds great if you believe in that. But I got information from the North Carolina Cooperative Extension on keeping chickens. And even in their guidance, they're like, if if you're doing this, you know, cuz you think it's cheaper to raise your own eggs and eat the meat. It's it's cheaper to go to the store and buy it, so.
Well, can we do that? I mean, can can you continue working on it and feed us more information?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think we need, I think we need a month.
Well, and that's, I, yeah, what I wanted, like I said, one, I wanted to get this in front of you guys tonight and so once again, hear everything that's kind of been done up until this point and all, as well as once again, what we have have on our book. What I can do for our next meeting is I will probably, I will probably either in a report or something, I'm gonna have, there there's certain things in here that once again, based off of just some of the feedback here as well as, I mean, we've kind of discussed if it is a rooster or if it's the number. Maybe have my staff recommendations, will also can provide those ordinances that um uh she looked at as well as just some other sample ones. That's how I like to do it anyway, package it and say, hey, this is what this municipality does, is how much either chickens they regulate or or whatever.
So, as as an additional landowner and equine enthusiast and owner of horses in the area, and someone who, as soon as my kids are old enough to do real chores, would love to dabble in chickens cuz you can learn a whole lot by mucking stalls and cleaning up all kinds of excrement about the way the world moves. I think that it's really important if we're gonna go down this road to Mike's point is that we need to take time to think about this and not just haphazardly do it. And I'm not at all suggesting that the applicant did that and I'm grateful for your time in putting in this, putting in this foundational work. And I think that's something worth considering. We certainly don't want people, you know, putting together, I don't know, like hordes of animals, right? Like we don't want it to be a safety for that kind of thing, but I also think that it's important
Starting to a little bit.
That we look at, look at this and have time to think about it. So I agree that tonight, I don't feel comfortable with making any least steps forward, any recommendations, et cetera, until we have a chance to look at it and maybe do some additional background work.
Yeah, and if if you look at the towns, if you go online and pull up the towns I mentioned, their ordinances are very easy to find and then you click on, they're they're all set up the same way. It's all. their ordinances are very easy to find and then you click on, they're, they're all set up the same way, it's all under animal control. And it's all laid out in a similar fashion to this, if you wanna go read them.
They all use me, all use Municod, who are.
Yeah.
Or use American.
Is there something that you go into?
Can I interrupt?
That, that actually we're.
Yeah, Rich.
Somebody has two microphones, I'm getting tremendous echo. You all have on your laptops there, is there a second microphone open because the echo? Am I the only one who's hearing?
There shouldn't be, cause we turn on one specific one. This is a brand new mic.
No, I did look at.
No, 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 it's on the table, I think it's, is it, is it potentially your uh, the laptops there that you're using that have a mic open, cause I'm just hearing a lot of feedback.
Audio settings.
And.
I'll keep talking just to do tests, if anybody else hears the feedback.
No feedback in the village.
I'm definitely heard it.
Do the noise remover.
All day, all night.
Always is or this one?
Uh.
Physically kick and bounce, kick and bounce. Try one.
So while you're looking at this, that I think that we certainly need to take a look at this text amendment. Cause there's other things I would like to see here, potentially, we need to split out between dogs and cats and then other types of animals, the uh, the hoofed animals, uh, that, that, the cows, the chickens, the, the pigs, things along those lines. But al- also, if we're gonna take a look at this text amendment, we also need to take a look at breed-specific ban of, of, of certain dogs, I know that there are people that have pit bulls, they let them roam loose, and other types of things, and that should we start throwing out there, these people need to have liability insurance. So if we're to put together a section on animal control, or animal control might about be the right word, but on livestock and, and all these things, there's a lot of other things we should take into account as well.
Yeah, I mentioned to Hunter, a- and I didn't know if that was some, something that we wanted to tackle, but most of these places also have limits on the number of dogs and cats and breeding.
Like I said, that's.
But that's like.
Stay, I mean, that's typical, I mean, that's, once again, that's um.
Can't be that late with a hundred and thirteen cats.
Yeah, I mean, once again, it's, I've seen them, I mean, I've done, I've, I've did an ordinance for one of my towns that I used to work for was animal keeping and domestic keeping, it was, you know, had dogs and it limited the number of dogs at nine unless they had puppies and then obviously if they were puppies, then they had a year to get rid of them, but your, your cap was at nine. Um, so it does happen, uh, but once again, I think though, we're.
I think we're all for it, we just, we just want some time to, to.
Yeah, and I, and I think th- this might be directionally correct, the numbers and I told Hunter, we might need to tweak the numbers and the requirements, but.
If you can get some addresses too, where we could drive by and see, you know, the farms and uh.
Yeah, so are you familiar with the?
What now, Waxaw Marvin Road?
Says, if you go down Waxaw Marvin Road and then where that big bar- red barn is where Bonds Grove forks and Waxaw Marvin keeps going, there's a neighborhood on the left that's Valhalla.
Right.
Um, those are all larger tracts, a lot of them have animals, horses.
In there, in the.
And then the neighborhood on the right, even those properties on the right, the whole way after you turn right, that's all Providence Estates. And if you drive back in that neighborhood, you can see that there's a lot of horse properties.
Those are two good examples.
Yeah, I'm not sure, Beechwood I think has larger tracts, I'm not sure if they have horses. And then Chestnut, Chestnut down here has horses.
And we have horses.
Any side where we can take notice.
Uh, farm with metal art.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we have pretty.
Well, we allow livestock in any residential district.
We have straight.
Uh, product system.
The, the only thing I.
Valhalla.
I can't remember.
The only thing I'm not seeing right now is um, this actually happened.
On Bonds Grove.
When an animal passes away.
Across from that big red barn.
Like when we will of the.
That might, uh, that might already be in our animal, I don't.
They're like.
But lives, I mean livestock, I mean, so, so I just wanna make sure that you can't like, are we allowing people to bury livestock on their properties? Um, like how, and, and then what is the, how do you uh, do animal removal if they pass away, cause like, there was a dead calf hanging out here for like a day or two.
I think you gotta report it to your mechanic.
I don't think they'll do anything about it, you have to, as the animal owner, I have to bury it.
Mm-hmm, it's your responsibility, it's expensive.
From your, your gates.
I'm still responsible for it, if it kills anybody, I'm responsible and I have to remove that animal and dispose of it.
Yeah, um.
Well, it looks like John has uh, something to add.
Go ahead, John.
And I may sort of couple things. You know, sort of, and I think that we're gonna have to bring it back up, you know, after tonight. But one is, you know, as I said earlier, I think we'll, to differentiate, you know, between an acre and a half and twenty or thirty acres. Because I know over on, you know, Marvin Waxaw Road, right there around Crane, uh, there's, there's a couple of farms in there, I don't know exactly how large, but and then right at the intersection of Crane, I don't know what they have there, but periodically you see a sign up that they have uh, uh, manure for sale.
That's, that's Cedar Hill, I don't know if they're in Marvin.
They're not.
And then, on up is the, right there at New York Bonds Road is the, the place the sheep at and the field. So, you know, I, I think we have to find a way to differentiate that. And then the other, it, it, sorry, in regards to those places, you know, the very last uh, paragraph in the proposal says that uh, basically it says you can't have any pigs unless you have a state permit, I didn't know you had a state permit for pigs. It also says you can have only one hot-belly pig, I don't, I don't, not have any, but, you know, I, I'm not sure where those come. Cause I know some of those farms, you know, historically farms, even if they weren't in the big business, they would raise, you know, two or three or just for their own use over the year. So we have to keep, you know, some of these people, you know, they don't fit into that acre, they don't fit into Marvin Creek car, obviously. But uh, there, there are properties that, that more flexibility does fit in there.
Well, I think, I think Hunter was saying that um, those properties more than likely would fall under a different ordinance because they are legitimate farms. So maybe we just add a.
We need to just add a bona fide farm exemption.
Yeah, or like, you know, the, this, this applies to, you know, acreage, this and under, or, you know, like, or somebody doesn't have.
Which that's how, that's kind of how ours reads now in a way. I mean, was more of the opposite way.
Well, it falls under the sk- stable keeping too.
Yeah. Um, I'll have to, we, we, we can kinda manu- definitely like find a way there, and that's kinda, that's the thing is that there's certain things here that's, that I, I personally from a staff level want to put specifically into zoning under our accessory uses and part of that's like, if it's chicken keep, animal keeping, because I, you know, specific regulations for coops and all of that, because that is strictly then where I can enforce it, don't have to get anybody else involved, straightforward. So there's some other things that, yeah, that we're gonna have to then tie into with the animal control and part of that chapter. Um, but uh, that's kind of, yeah, that's, I wanted to get some feedback, see what your guys kind of comments and stuff were, and that's where I'm gonna uh, do, do my magic and get to work over the next month for, for the March meeting, but um, but for the most part, I mean, this was a very good application submitted in base. Um, it wasn't like she told me what she wanted and then I had to, you know, kinda do this, and it was a very well put together um, proposal with, with justifications as well as, I mean, I think she did a great job that, once again, trying to cater it to Marvin, you know, coming from a resident that's been here, um, seventeen years.
Twenty.
Or twenty, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, that uh, so I mean, she knows the area and knows, I mean, seen it, seen it growing, so. I, that's, that's input that I need once again, cause it's stuff like I can, I can put together an ordinance, but there's certain things that I can't, I can't always, you know, foresee or, or know about.
Yeah, um, the only question I think I, I have, and we don't, this is just something I, um, so just talking about the smaller livestock, so like goat, sheep, other small livestock for the one uh, one quarter of an acre. Like I know right now that Mr. Lett keeps, I don't know, eight to ten goats on his property, um, I, you know, that's one of those things where goats are also used to like lawn bowers, you know what I mean, like they're used.
Property maintenance.
You can actually like, you know, rent goats just to clear your brush, so um, I don't, I don't know, like, I don't know if uh.
There needs to be a business called Rent a Goat.
Oh, there is, I mean, there, there's my, one of my best friends rented some goats to clear some brush on her property. I mean, you gotta pin them in and stuff, but um, if you don't already have a fence, but um, yeah. So, I think this is a great, this is a great start, I'd love to float it by um, some of my neighbors who are, you know, horse or equine owners and um, we've had a lot of discussion about bees, like beekeeping in our neighborhood and like chickens and, yeah.
Yeah, and I guess the vein, when you, when you talk to people about this, the vein of this is, okay, if your neighbor moves out and somebody from not this area moves in, and they have ten horses on whatever that acreage is, five acres, are you gonna be happy, or cows, or, cause you can have any of it right now.
Yeah.
That's kind of the vein this is written in, not trying to change. I mean, Marvin, part of Marvin's character is the smaller, the, the farms that you drive through, they're, you know, small, houses, small acreage with horses and it's nice to look at because it's, you're not seeing it anymore. And they, they happen to be in neighborhoods too, um, it's just part of the character of Marvin. And people from Charlotte, they only live thirty minutes up the road, they're amazed that this is still out here.
Well, this is great, so I guess um, we, we won't recommend.
Well, I'm moving to table it.
Well, okay, yeah, I guess we do, I guess we do need to make a motion.
You don't have to make a motion.
Yeah, as long as y'all agree.
Yeah, does everybody on, online agree that we should table this, let's go like um, read through it more thoroughly, post some questions, talk to our neighbors.
Yeah.
Come back to it.
Absolutely.
Well, y'all keep working and then, you know, any new information you have to share, please do.
Yeah, what I'll do, and like I said, as you guys read through this, please um, if you have any questions and or especially like the ones that um, that we've looked at or that I know of, like I, I'd be happy to kinda, you know, share that, review those. I do plan, like I said, I'm gonna package all that together and try to, I'll probably highlight, I mean, once again, so you guys kinda have something to look at, I mean, I, um, for the next meeting as well, as like I said, I'm gonna, I'm gonna draft kind of that staff recommendation, I mean, a lot of it's kind of there, it's just, you know, like, cause there's points here that I think are straightforward, everybody's good with. But then there's other things that I do wanna then, you know, really kinda discuss out and get a re- recommendation from, like, for example, are we gonna allow a rooster or not, how many chickens and certain things like that, so, that's where I really wanna get some feedback um, at the next meeting for the, for the recommendation.
Um, llamas, where do they, we get a lot of questions about can we keep llamas when people are trying to buy into our neighborhood? Um, and the answer for us is, right now is no, uh, but where do llamas fall, are they?
Right now?
Are they in?
Have them, cause we, we have had people in our neighborhood with them.
Like, but are they, they're not considered equine, so like, where, where would they?
It's a cloven hoof, so I would think it would fall under the livestock and maybe that, we need to be clearer on that wording.
It's just something that we, we get asked a lot about llamas and then um, also just um, people want, they want to keep llamas and certain things to start businesses, so like they wanna, you know, so like just small farm llama breed, you know, like.
When you make a round of Joe Carr, that first house on the left has a couple of young llamas, a couple of yamas.
Yamas, yammy yamas.
Yeah, so we, in the, um, we proposed to change um, the definition, uh, we're adding in a definition. It says livestock includes all animals of a domesticated agricultural nature, including but not limited to equine, bovine, sheep, goats, llamas, swine, poultry.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that would be livestock.
Yeah, we'll have to um, like I said, one, the first thing we had defining, and then it's then when you get into the regulations and those, those regulations tie into those definitions, cause the simplest way that, like I said, we've done this before, that I've done this before, is you, you define livestock just as it was, like you, everything, or, or foul, for example.
Mm-hmm.
And then you say all of it's prohibited, and then you have exceptions. You prohibit everything and then you do your exceptions and then it's like, okay, exception's horses, and then if it has these require, meets these requirements, typically, I think ones that I've done is like two and a half acres, then each addi- each, an additional acre for each additional horse. The stable has to be X amount of feet from property line, has to be fenced in, has to be up kept, all this sort of stuff.
The property lines are the.
Well, property, and that's the thing from chickens too, and then how our ordinance currently reads says a hundred and fifty feet. In my opinion, my, my recommendation is you actually make that smaller and I'm not saying that you are trying to allow chickens closer to people, because then what you do is that there's certain lots that are not a hundred, that are not three hundred feet wide.
Most are not, yeah.
Um, you make it like fifty feet from a property line and then at least a hundred fifty, three hundred feet from any adjoining dwelling. Cause then it's still, it's still then, it's still achieving that same thing, it's just making it clear. Because then it's like, okay, well, if they have like fifty feet on, from a property line, but the neighbor's house is seventy feet, well, okay, then it's outlawed, but it's like if you have these larger tracts, and I think that's kinda what John was kinda saying, like, there's ways to then think through it where we're really trying to then make sure it doesn't happen if it's in the preserve or, you know, Marvin Creek or something like that, where they have these chicken coops or the chicken keeping on top of each other, because that is when it does become a greater nuisance. But then still.
And the HOA rules though, like, HOA trumps all.
Well, I, yeah, I don't.
Where you come across with these neighborhoods, cause they're older, the, the homeowners association is, uh, um, covenants are not written like they are today.
Yeah, oh yeah, I know.
So it's the size of the house, the setback from the road, no trash, it's very general.
Yeah, yeah.
But, and that's where, oh man.
Just like whoever, whoever has the more strict ordinance or rule is the one that applies.
Well, yeah, if it comply, I mean, from my point of view, of the village is if it complies with our standards, whatever the HOA says, that is a civil lawsuit between the HOA and that property owner, whoever, I, I don't get involved in that. I can make people aware if I know what their HOA covenants state, but I can, I cannot legally not issue a permit if it's not compliant. Um, but I was gonna say something else from the chicken coop, and then I lost my train of thought.
Sorry.
It's all good.
Prime my phone. Oh, the, like, li- um, we were, you were discussing setbacks and sometimes it's just better to.
Oh, yeah, yeah, because the angle with like the chicken keeping, you know, once again, most people will keep them for eggs. Now, some people are keeping them because price of chicken's gone way up, I don't know, um, but.
It's a very ineffective way to have chickens.
Um.
They've, they've convinced themselves that.
Well, homes, yeah, I mean, homesteading is a, has been a trend for years now and, you know.
Yeah, and it's just amping up.
Yeah, and the more crazy things get, and when shortages start happening and supply chain issues start happening, people tend to go back to, you know, we're gonna be living in zombie apocalypse land, so.
My gosh, chickens gone for a week, let me go by ten.
But with that being said, it's like, you know, you brought up, like, you're bringing up a good point, it's like, what we're trying to achieve is where, when, where allowed, how far, because at the end of the day, where you're trying to, um, oh, that's exactly what I was gonna say. Chicken coops, like if we regulate, you know, from property line and then adjoining, okay, well, that's one thing, but like on these larger tracts and stuff, that's where, I mean, that, that's where it's gonna be really key, because especially like you might have the acreage, but then where you put your chicken coop, because at the end of the day, it's also then trying to be respectful and or not create a nuisance that, to adjoining properties, cause chickens do smell, or if it's the sound or whatever, so.
And they also attract coyotes and foxes, and if you've got other livestock nearby, like, that was one of the issues that came up in our neighborhood was, you know, neighbors wanting to put chicken coops up where there are horses and horse owners are like, I don't want coyotes, you know, running around my property already, more than they already are, so, um, yeah. Okay, well, cool, well, thank you so much, we really appreciate this. Um, this is a great start and I, I think everyone probably agrees that.
Me too, yeah.
We need something and.
Yeah.
And this is a, a great start to, to get there, so.
I'll follow, yeah, you, I'll follow up with you probably tomorrow.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks for your time.
Alright, thanks so much. Alright.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving on, um, discussion of priorities and goals for twenty twenty-two.
Okay.
Really fast, just a reminder, y'all have your joint meeting with council on March first, six P M. You guys need to basically discuss what your priorities and goals are for this year, so you can be prepared to talk to council about them. Go ahead, Hunter.
I was gonna say, I also dropped the ball and didn't send you guys something for the last meeting, um, I apologize on that. If you guys recall, we were talking about kinda the land use, we were trying to get some, I wanted you guys to kinda give me some recommendations, prioritize certain areas of our land use or um, just certain things in general, and I was like, well, I'll put together a form and mail it to you, email it to you guys and I didn't, so.
I know, I had a panic moment, I was like, oh my gosh, I just saw the survey.
She asked me, oh my god, where's the survey?
I was like, I don't remember seeing the survey.
No, I said it, and then I think it was like a week or two, you went on vacation and stuff and I. No, I said it, and then I think it was like a week or two, you went on vacation and stuff, and I remember it was like two weeks later, and I was like, I forgot to do that. And I'm not gonna stress, we'll just kind of, you know.
Normally, I remind you about things, but I was in Vegas, I wasn't thinking about survey.
Yeah. With that being said.
Are you guys still getting the feedback? I just wanna make sure.
We're gonna have a new audio set up next month, so it's.
John?
Yeah, I I'm not sure that that I could hear, you know, the conversation there, but I was gonna say, you know. And honestly, I haven't done the due diligence, that was the impression I got. But um, you know, maybe go around individually, if anybody's, you know, made any thoughts about goals and, you know, objectives.
Or do you wanna actually send the survey out before?
I didn't do the due diligence. I'm I'm gonna tell him, the only thing I wrote down is I think we had to have a scale.
I didn't even hear what, I didn't.
The scale draw.
A rendering.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, is there anything of any of the board members specifically from the last meeting that we wanna go ahead and either. Discuss or just state any goals, priorities for the board as well? I mean, um.
Isn't, I mean, but I get what you're saying, you know, but the planning board kind of is given tasks rather than requesting tasks. I know you wanna kind of, you know, revamp the zoning and and the ordinances and everything, but we're kind of a. You know, we're kind of given responsibility that, you know, we have to vote on things and do things and, you know, I think that's what our. Our.
Well, and that's the thing, is it's how active and proactive do you guys want to be? Because you're right, you know, I've worked with planning boards that meet only when there's applications or reasons to meet. Um, you know, I obviously don't wanna keep you guys here longer on our nor, I mean, normal meetings and, but I do think though. I mean, we got through the first three, but it's like, I wanna be pro, I mean, I wanna be productive, and that's the thing is that. Like I said, all day, I can sit there and review our ordinance and say, all right, this section needs to be fixed or whatever, but it's like.
And that's, I mean, I mean, that's what I'm talking about. You know, this is your area of expertise on that, and you can look at something and say, you know, this just isn't right. Throw it out to us and say, is this something we think we should work on? Is that is really what I was thinking would be the the best possible way? Because you have a much better understanding and knowledge of these than we do, and when you see something that you 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 just isn't right, you say, hey, let's. What do you think about we work on this? And of course, well, you know, that's that's exactly what we'll do, but, you know, I didn't go, I didn't go through all the ordinances and everything.
Well, and and I'm not asking you go through all the ordinances. Um that's why I put that, the land use plan goals and recommendations. Cause there's certain things that came up through discussions and, you know, one with cut with the Heritage District was like. That it's outlined in our our land use plan as a goal and recommendation, but unless, you know, once again. Policy and ordinances are then derived from those goals and recommendations. And so all I wanted from that, it's like, once again, I can look through that and be like. My person, my, I mean, is this a priority to me, or do I think this is? But I wanna know what maybe some of your priorities are, because I do think going through this process and even like from this animal keeping, like, there's gonna be like. To to me.
That was good.
And then, and then, yeah, and this is nothing with her, we've been, uh she's been great to work with, but it's like, I wouldn't have brought this to your guys' attention to probably discuss immediately. But this was something that was a, you know, a personal thing, and she wanted to go through the process, and so that's why, you know, that was done that way, and so. Um.
And that's kind of what I'm saying. I think that's what we're here for, is we we kind of address those issues that somebody says this just isn't right, and then we tackle them. And we take a look at them, and then we resolve them and and make them right.
Well, and that's the uh, the other thing is that I'm trying to also be efficient. I don't.
We can do one a month.
Well, that's what I, and that's what I wanna do, is that I I said, I said two a month, and originally I was gonna have some potential, like a section or something from like me. But it's also, there's gonna be something that are pretty much more straightforward or that I've had time to kind of really research and think through. But once again, if.
You get that second one, the second one might be.
Yeah, as well as, uh over the next, I mean, over this year, yeah, I it's, you know, uncertain on how many applications. If it's special use permits or subdivision or even rezonings for the Heritage District that we are then going to be reviewing. And so those are gonna take priority over any text amendment or or stuff like that. So it's kind of just still having like a, not necessarily a backup plan, uh in theory, a backup plan for when we don't have applications. It's that I still wanna be productive and let's do this while we have the time, the free time, because that was, you know. From when I first started, it was pretty much Heritage District and whatever applications were on the table. So I haven't had, I mean, there's a lot of things that I haven't even thought about since I first started and or it's like.
But now you're coming up for air.
Yeah, it it's so um. And like I said, with the ordinances, there are certain things, like, all right, this needs to be changed, this needs to be changed, I just don't have time. Or just, you know, it's, that that's what I'm kind of, I'm getting to that point now with with being here, so.
And and like I, I mean, like I think I mentioned last time, like, I would love to see a prioritized list from you as to which. Text amendments need to be made, because they are the most problematic in y'all's work. Do you know what I mean? Like, they come up the most often, or like they cause the most misinformation or confusion amongst developers or applicants. Or whatever it is, like. Yeah, like, we just need to, let's, let's prioritize um the text amendments. And then um like whatever I, what is gonna make you guys run more efficiently, like, we're happy to. You bring it on to us, right? Like, we'll, whatever you think is is the priority, like, I think we should, we should be addressing it. Um but are we, where are we with the heritage? Um my brain is so tired. I've I've been like just going way too hard recently with work. So like, what is our next step with the Heritage District? Cause I mean, it is a priority, because we we do want to make sure that we're. If things are gonna start happening, right? People are gonna start applying for things, like, we wanna be able to guide them so that we have the best possible outcomes. So um, you know, to me, that's a priority is whatever, whatever that next step is. How how do we then start making that happen so that when we do start getting those applications for rezoning? We are able to handle them.
And and that's a great point. Um with the Heritage District specifically, uh. There's really no. Next step right now until we get a formal application. As in, well, you know, from a staff standpoint, it's working with those property owners or the developer applicant, whatever. To get the proper stuff before it all gets to you guys. You know, one thing that, what's gonna be in pro- product, proactive, productive, however you wanna phrase it. Even though we beat it pretty hard, is like going back through that ordinance, and if there's something in there that doesn't make sense or something, once again, it's maybe, let's think through this. Cause it's adopted, but we can always go back and make changes. We can always find ways to be better, smarter, clearer. Um and I think I even stated that when the Heritage, when that form-based code came across to you guys and said, look, I think this is a ninety-five to ninety-nine percent there. But it's like, there's always that, that one thing that we potentially missed. Now, with it being a conditional zoning district, that's where we're kind, that's where we have that chance that it's not gonna kill us. Or or it's not really going to maybe have some type of submittal that's just off the wall that we didn't think about. With that being said. When we get the first application, which we're, I'm anticipating probably two to three applications this year. Um rezoning applications. And honestly, I, those are more of like. I mean, let and Fincher, let I had honestly table for a little bit, but apparently, I mean, he's marketed his property and I don't know where he's at on that. But, you know, that's that's something that could happen fairly soon. Um. Yeah, I mean, if we get, if we get those two, I mean, that's gonna be, that's gonna be a lot. And, you know, that's the thing, is throughout this process, there's, you know, if it's Rafi's property or like this old crane store, just certain things like that, like. They're in the Heritage District, but I'm more thinking of, you know, I always saw it as like, let's larger tracks maybe develop first, and then all the other stuff will happen. Well. I know I've had two calls from, you know, the individual property owners maybe looking at, hey, like, what can we do? So when I say like two to three, like, it could be one or two big ones and a few other small, I it really. I I personally, I wanna cap maybe two to three applications a year, because I.
Can you do that?
No.
No, but.
Maybe twelve people come in at the same time, we just, we just.
Yeah.
Heard and the order received.
Yeah.
That's true.
Yeah, I mean, that's how basically, how you cap it is you you deal with what you can.
As well as though it's going to be, it's gonna be kind of different when it come, those applications come. Because, for example, obviously, the application spell either for let or Fincher is gonna be a whole lot more complex than.
Don't we need to have a Marvin Heritage Board set up by then?
Yes and no. It's, and and the way it's in the ordinance.
Another layer of questions, yeah.
But what I, but, you know, those applications are gonna be a whole lot more complex and and receive a lot more comments or and or like have more discussion compared to.
Especially that.
Maybe, you know, Will Owens' property wants to outfit it, and he does X, Y, and Z to meet buffer screening, all this other stuff. Okay, that's like, okay, we're good with it. I mean, you know, it's.
Might be simplistic, or it might be like months and months and months of of work, yeah.
I think the latter.
Well, I think for those larger tracks, you're gonna see, which I, from a staff level. There might be a lot of things that I do with the applicant to get all the stuff required before you guys. I mean, because it's just, it's a waste of time if we're gonna sit here and say, well. Um and that's why we did the small area plan, that's why we did the design stuff and all that in the. Form-based code. Go ahead, John.
Yep.
John, been raising his hand like crazy. Now he's, now he's frozen.
Hello.
That might have been our connection, actually.
Okay, uh I I think we've gotten a little off track, you know, and getting off onto the Heritage District, onto the goals and objectives. Let me, several years ago, we had a, you know, fairly quote specific list with.
Goals and objectives, I think.
And they were pretty high level objectives at that point in time, you know, not, you know, you know, nits and ticks and stuff. You know, I just jotted, you know, just for for the thought process, for people, you know, going forward, I jotted down four items. And sort of back to, you know, conversation about the the uh zoning ordinance. Develop a plan schedule for the review of the zoning ordinance, and that may be, you know, the first priority is the things need to be fixed today. But, you know, then from there, whatever needs to be next, you know, at least make it, note where we are on it. And then second, maybe, you know, and knows that the land use plan makes reference to it. Survey of historic buildings and locations. I don't know what does, has anyone within the village ever done that? Is, does that need to be done?
Did you say survey of historic buildings and locations?
Yeah, that's what I said, you know, survey, I sort of listed them.
Yeah, I don't know if that's ever been done.
Bob, can, John, can you pause for a second? Bob, Markleese, can you weigh in on that? Is that something that um? The the council has ever, you know, talked about since it was approved in the land use plan?
Yeah, sorry. No, not really, but I mean, you know, it's open to it. John, we're open to it.
Cause that's probably a budget item as well, John, that's got.
Repeat that again?
Uh, you know, doing that kind of survey is a, is, you know, is a budget impact, has a budget impact to it, so.
Or staff time impact.
Yeah, I mean, it depends on what we actually meant by.
Yeah.
Historical survey. We said survey and not like an accounting of, I mean, it was, you know, it was very specific language, so.
Yeah, you know, I don't know how it's done, you know, but, you know, we, you know, the the ones around. The Heritage District is fairly easy to to list, you know, the the crane store and the churches, et cetera, et cetera. I think there may be other things within Marvin. I don't know what they are. But, you know, and I don't know what it takes to do those, but, you know, but before things get away from us. We we ought to, you know, either the council needs to address it or something, someone, like I said, you know, instead of. In fact, oh, that example, the house that used to be at the intersection of Newtown Road. And Marvin Waxall Road, right there at Providence Downs, there was a old historic house. I think it was related to to Venture, that was bulldozed down for the subdivision. And that wasn't in the village of Marvin, but that's an example of something that, you know, we maybe should be aware of. So, you know, you know, this is just a level list. And, you know, Kelly brought up, you know, what's the next thing on the Heritage District? You know, once again, before that gets away from us, I know that I think land use plan addressed a theme or identity or signage. I don't know who comes up with that, maybe that's the the strategic committee or something, but, you know. Once again, before elements start happening, maybe we need, someone needs to go down that road. And and then the last thing on our list, I know it's been referred to before, but I've never seen it, and I've been told that we have it. But we have Marvin Traffic Calming Plan. I don't know what that is and what is involved within our, you know, realm or anything else. But, you know, review that. I don't know whether there's anything that needs to be done on that. And these are, you know, these are just, you know, we're getting conversations started, kind of.
A policy. Hunter's saying that we have a traffic calming. Rich, I don't know if you.
We gotta get everybody back.
Yeah, I I, you kind of um, kind of fell off there, but um. I, Hunter's saying we have a traffic calming policy. There are things, you know, like, we can't, obviously, um, we can request things from N C D O T. But um, you know, there are things that as a planning board we can do, because we have had this discussion before, cause that was one of my top priorities a couple of years ago. Was traffic, because it was like the biggest issue on the survey that came out was, you know, uh, traffic calming. So there are things as a planning board that we can do uh to calm traffic. Um. A lot of it, I think, will also maybe even take place in the Heritage District as things start to get rezoned and changed. Like, it'll come into play there, like, cause we'll, the developer will be asked to put certain things in place, so. Um but yeah, if we do have a policy, I do think, Hunter, maybe we could put that on an agenda for, like, within the next couple of months, just even look at. What is the policy? Like, do we have a traffic calming plan? Like, what, we know what some of the strategies are for traffic calming, you know. Whether it's sidewalks, crosswalks, you know, um, yeah, like trees, planting, you know, uh, trees along the sides, like. They're all different.
I've got it hanging up in my office. I think I've only looked at it once.
Okay, maybe it's just good for us to review it then.
Yeah, no, it's for, what it references is basically like either talks about trying to limit impact on traffic as well. And like certain developments, either if it's um, if it's village maintained streets and or from a developer standpoint. Um putting in some type of, you know, speed hump, speed bump, whatever, speed table. Uh, any type of crosswalk, I mean, like the stuff that you've mentioned. Um but I'm pretty sure it just states that it can be requested in the village, then does an assessment and stuff like is needed. And it kind of outlines what what's needed for that, I guess, what's, it outlines what we then go assess. I think it's a simple way to put it.
Yeah, and, you know, I I I do think what, what I think Rich was probably trying to bring up is. What, what do as a planning board we have control over? Like, for instance, I was driving to work this morning and or yesterday and noticed that. Um Marvin Road now has one of those um check your speed signs, like right almost in front of um Firethorn. But like, I've personally requested one coming up over Melinda's Hill, coming up um Newtown. And I was told at a meeting that, like, I I requested it at a, at a um village council meeting. I was like, why don't we have that, you know, and they said, well, once we get it fixed, we'll, we'll put it out there, but it's never come out there. And I'm like, so why is it there and it's not, you know, on a, where people are doing forty-five in a thirty-five mile an hour zone or fifty miles an hour? I don't know if you've ever fly up that hill.
I mean, I think always the do is requested. Did you follow up?
We just got.
We've had ours, we've had that in the neighborhood.
All right, so did you guys put that out there?
No, but I'm saying, oh, we have the do is request and they.
We just got these new ones.
Yeah.
And then that was, that's, yeah, that that location was identified by council.
And they didn't, they didn't identify Newtown Road going through?
We had the old, like I said, that one was, we just got these, they are supposed to be moved and put up at the request of property, I mean, however it's done. Bob's still on, he might be able to add a little bit, but um.
Let's stick to our goals.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But yeah.
Okay, I'll ask.
Council, we're making a council in a couple of weeks.
Okay, or maybe I'll send a email to Christina. Okay. Does does anyone else? Does, does anyone else have, um, does anyone else have any thoughts or ideas on, um, you know, priorities, planning board priorities?
I do, I've written down several items. Um, again, it's based on what we receive if we get new developments, uh, some, if you look at flood plain regulations, uh, building development. And, and again, I'm not saying there's tremendous network, but looking at it, typing it up, so that when somebody does come to us, we're able to address it rather quickly. Um, one of the other things that I have, you talk about neighbors, talk about noise. Noises from air, animal fireworks, cars or traffic. And those aren't really things that we can control, but I think that if it's something that we could get out in front of, because again, people are gonna shoot firearms whenever they want, even though they're really illegal in North Carolina. But there's been a lot of talk about people complaining about air traffic too. We had very little to do with that. And what comes over Marvin, if you talk to the FAA, is overflow. We are not in a flight pattern, it's strictly overflow. Then the last thing I wanted to throw out there was firearms. I have had neighbors not happy with me when I clean my firearms. And I'm sorry, I'm a responsible gun owner. And if I'm taking something apart and cleaning it, I have every right to do that. And I, and I, I think that there's just some things that we could just take a look at and eventually.
What do they clean their house, what do they clean to them?
I don't think you heard you. We, we actually had a neighbor that was, um, turned their backyard into a firing range. Um, so, you know, I don't, I don't think that.
You're not supposed to fire.
You're not supposed to fire, you know, and you know, our neighborhood also backs up to South Carolina, so we hear gunshots all the time. And, you know, you don't know where it's coming from, um, so. It's, it's kind of, yeah. Um, but you know, maybe, um, what if, what if we did, uh, maybe we, you know, the village has done a really great job of starting to communicate, uh, more openly with neighbors. And what if we did a series, like a little communication series about, you know, hey, did you know that it is illegal to, to, uh, you know, shoot a firearm in Marvin? I mean, you know, just like little things.
I think that was on.
We already did that.
Oh, you already did?
Yeah.
That was literally, did you know?
Yeah. So, yeah.
What a brilliant idea!
You can tell, you can tell Christina that.
Yeah, and Kelly, Kelly reads all that, all that mail.
This week in Marvin?
I do, I don't read any of my personal email.
Wow.
Yeah, that's why they have to email me at work, so, um, yeah. Um, hopefully, yeah, and more than likely the people who are breaking the ordinances don't read those newsletters either, but, you know.
You know, in our neighborhood, people are concerned about the new fire, the new trash. And it's like, if you sign up for the Village of Marvin Weekly Newsletter, you get all the information. So we put a link on our HOA website so people can go and say, so we don't have to answer those questions.
Yeah, trust me, between a lot of the work Austin does, as well as, I mean, you know, my time being here, Marvin does well than any other community I've ever worked for, worked with, whatever, with communication.
It's not always been that way, so.
Like, yeah.
This.
No, but it is now.
It is now, yeah, no, absolutely.
And we have the quarterly, I guess, is what the technical term is, um, HOA President's Meeting, which ours is actually, uh, next week.
It's coming up next week, right?
Um, where we push out, once again, all of that same information to those HOA Presidents and, uh, you know, if it's certain links or something, yeah, it's, because, once again, they're kind of a direct contact for that. And so it's one way to, another way to get information out to the people. Um.
How is, um, how are the online ordinances set up? I know you guys are, are potentially moving to another company, but like, you know, as a, as a homeowner, or like as someone who bought land somewhere else and had to try and navigate someone else's ordinances, you know, how are our ordinate, ordinances visually set up for people who are, wanna come and learn, like what can I do, what can I not do? Like, if they're, they wanna build a pool, how can they easily find things? Or is there like a most frequently asked, like an FAQ, most frequently asked questions that can link people to, like, I wanna build a pool, like, here's where you go? Like, how is the interface for just, not developers, but just, you know, everyday Marvin, Marvinites?
They just call you up, don't they? That's what they do.
Yeah.
But you know, that's the thing though, like, that is a, that is a waste of your time if there's a way to kind of grab those frequently asked questions and make it available for people.
Wasn't there an FAQ on the website?
Yeah, I think it's a good idea, but to be, to be honest with you, it's people, they're, they still are gonna call me without, I mean, um, but we do, I mean, we have our ordinances online, um, I mean, and we have a core, code of ordinances page, which this will change. It goes to this, it's, it's a pretty easy function. You can search, like, so if you wanna search pool, can't type it up, it's upside down. Like, it will tell you all the, and then you can literally click it and the right, and then like, so the regulations are there. Um, the new software that we have will be pretty much the same. The other thing I'm gonna do is try to, uh, pull out and just put, do a PDF. Some people would just like to, I mean, if it's, if it's on their iPad, sometimes it's easier to just search, keyword search or something like that. Um, so we do provide, you know, those, that, that availability to people, it's there. Um, but once again, it's, the, the two things there is one, somebody actually doing it, or somebody actually taking the time to maybe look at it, but then two, again, I, I'm not trying to keep bragging on our ordinances, but then two, it's, somebody can read something and interpret it one way or not understand what it means, and so they're still gonna call. And that's, and that's what I'm trying to, in a way, achieve with certain of the ordinance revisions is like, how can we make this clear? Um, how can we, you know, make it more straightforward? Cause it's either, there's something that I sit here and read a couple of times and I'm like, uh, your guess is good as mine, or it's like, you know, and how the whole animal thing is that I interpret it one way, but she, you know, brings up a good point, and I'm like, I talked to the attorney and he's like, well, you know, it's our, it's, it is legal interpretation of the villages, but at the same time, like, it's stuff like that, that I don't want, I don't wanna be anything, I, I want it to be black and white and straightforward. Which is hard. There's certain things that you want in the gray, but that's just the issue is that there's a lot that's just unclear, just doesn't make sense in our ordinance right now. Um.
All right, so we're back to prioritizing ordinances to, to address the.
But yeah, the, we do have, we're wrapping up the reorganization project, um, which we, like I said, will be a new interface. Um, and, and it is a little bit more user friendly, it's more actually user visually appealing to, um, which that hopefully should be wrapped up in the next month or two.
Hey, John, it looks like John had another question or comment.
Yeah, uh, that, you know, I think it's Michael said something about, uh, residents saying, you know, Michael said if you sign up for the new, or the weekly newsletter, or the, the email, you know what's going on in the village. And I know Austin's not sitting there right now, I don't think, but, uh, our council member is, is still here. Probably all to come from him, they periodically, you know, put up banners out in front of village hall, you know, about different things. Maybe we put a banner up out there and say, sign up, you know, for the bill, get your name on the village email list, so you get
Write that down.
weekly updates in the village, or, and maybe put something on there, you know, that, you know, we have a new website, go to, you know, W W W dot, you know, see Marvin's new website, something like that, may.
Just don't do it while you're driving in your car.
No QR codes while you're driving?
Yeah.
Um.
Do it when you get home.
Are you guys on, you guys are, what social media platforms are you on?
Uh, we're not on Instagram, but we may be if I get my communications consultant.
I think some of the council people are already, are on, uh.
Almost none, none, none of the council are, have social media, I think.
No, we have a Twitter and Facebook, and we push out in, in Nextdoor, and Austin pushes a lot, he pushes almost everything out through either Facebook or Nextdoor.
Okay.
Right?
Yeah, I am Twitter, but hardly anyone here uses Twitter, so.
How many followers does a Twitter account have?
Not many, like fifty, if that.
I, I kind of wonder, you know, for, for some people, uh, you get overwhelmed with emails, so, you know, would Marvin be interested in even, um, doing like a text message service just for like, you know, the, like a monthly newsletter, or you know, like alerts or?
So we have some new software that we've not implemented yet, and it's got some sort of service like that, but then it may be only for emergencies, uh, we, we gotta figure that out.
Yeah, we got, it's, there, there'll be an app, it's my civic app. Most municipalities do have, it's typically, um, like Red Alert, I think is actually the term, where it's like, you know, the, if you're signed up for the Red Alert, so you might say like Red Alert, like water main break on Newtown, I mean, like you'll get updates like that. Um, as well as you can get others, but, yeah, the, really the village as a whole is implementing, where there's a new software that basically we got for finance, but it encompasses a lot more functionality, even from planning and zoning, permit tracking, all this great stuff. Um, so there are, there, that stuff's coming down the pipeline that I think will open opportunities for residents to, um, easy access for, to e- either if it's newsletter, communication, contact, whatever, um, you know, will be right there at the, at your fingertip.
Okay. Who else has, um, comments, questions for priorities focused for twenty twenty-two?
I was just gonna make one other suggestion, if the council is going to be meeting with the HOA president, potentially, if, if they could share with their email address list with us, so this way that we could have all the email addresses and we could start blasting out. If they wanna opt out, they can, but it's like, they have people that didn't know that we have digitalism all of a sudden from here.
So, I'm confused as to what he's asking.
I think he's asking, basically, when, when we meet, I think, and Rich clarified, don't say this right. You're asking for us to get the HOA's mailing list to add to ours?
Or just the presidents?
Correct, or just the presidents?
We won't, they won't give us.
Presidents, and you share your email list with us?
We will, we, we've had, in the past, uh, neighborhoods will not give us their own, their own list. And they're too, they're protective over that. We have a good relationship with the, with a lot of HOAs, um, and the, and the HOA presidents have been getting better about sharing our information along, especially if they think it's something that, especially if it's something they haven't heard about, though, they definitely.
We have all the HOA presidents.
Yeah, so, yes, and I work, I work with the, I work with the group of HOA presidents called the Marvin HOA Presidents Council. So, um, to help get information out.
Having the secretaries might also be.
Or property management.
Good, cause, you know.
But we do, we do what we can.
Mm-hmm.
As a former secretary, I was the one who got to communicate with everyone.
Y'all have the extra time, you know, we, we're, we're definitely running short on that.
Um, all right, so.
No, so what I'll, what I'll do is I will get you guys something out in the next week. I will try to have it out by Thursday, but if not, I will definitely be the first of next week. Um, with, and basically I'll do a survey, generic type thing, as well as, um, as we move forward, yeah, we'll definitely, I can put together some of the lists for prioritization from, from a staff end. Um, and we can kind of, you guys can get all that back to me. You say March first in like two and a half weeks?
March first is the joint meeting with the, with council.
So I'll try to get that to you guys tomorrow or Thursday, and then if you guys can get it back to me in a week or two. We basically just need it so that we can use that for points of discussion.
You're sending out a list of problem areas in the ordinances.
A survey, well, also.
For a survey? You're doing a survey? Okay.
To, to, yeah, for goals and recommendations, or goals and priorities for the year.
This is somewhat off topic, but are we, did you guys hear about the class action suit about some sort of box company that's been polluting Marvin air and like now Marvin residents are being asked to join the class action suit with some Waxall neighbors?
Not heard a word about it.
Really? I heard it from a lawyer that lives in Waxall, just down the road. Apparently, some, she was saying that Marvin was the one who was.
That sounds like next door fodder.
That does.
That's exactly what it sounds like.
I wanna, someone more, I'm gonna Google that later.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm curious.
I attended the session that the Environmental Protection Agency hosted, uh, cause I was curious about this and what was happening and was like, is this a thing, is it not a thing? And basically, you go outside and smell the weirdness, right? The thing that like waves through for a couple of days and then it's gone, especially if the wind's coming from a certain direction or it's still, that's what that is. But the EPA at this point said it's not grossly dangerous. It's, I believe they said it was hydrogen.
Sulfate.
Sodium, sulf- something, I don't remember, but their, their long story was, it stinks. Probably okay, but there's other things that are also being released as they continue to make more boxes for Amazon, it's a thing.
Yeah, and I, I also heard from the lawyer that I was talking to, um, she was saying that they're also dumping in local streams. So, um, I, I was asking her, well, cause I mean, my entire neighborhood's on well, so I'm like, well, is it, is there anything, are we talking like dumping into a stream? Are we talking about polluting water tables and I, you know, I don't know, anyway, so. I don't get on Nextdoor because I don't believe in the negativity to that thing. Can't even, I can't even take it, so, anyway.
And that wasn't covered at all in the thing that the EPA did, so I thought that's in the following, like, any of the rest of it. When I saw that the EPA was hosting a session, I went to that, cause I felt like that was like a reasonable sport.
Yeah.
A reason of it, not trying to get involved in.
Yeah, I mean, that, I mean, you know, it's not necessarily planning, planning, but like, if we've got corporations that are potentially polluting our air, that isn't, you know, that's an issue for neighbors and, I don't know.
Well, and, you know, we are.
We can put it on the, uh, council.
Well, we, well, we're already, it's already kind of a goal priority of council, so I said that we're, we are trying to work, either if it's through WUMA or with the county, on getting unified, I mean, just having certain regulations and stuff where it's like, once again, it where it's not as big of a gap, as in like, you know, county regulations are gonna be a whole lot less strict than ours and the county, I mean, but, so. Um, so I mean, that's already something that we're working on with the county, and that's, actually will be discussed with them.
Okay. All right.
Action items.
Uh, today, uh, today, uh, our, our dear Austin is trying to move the meeting along, so, uh, does anyone, he's already packing up, he's like got one foot out the door, uh, can we, uh, have a review of action items? And, uh, Hunter will, the first action item is Hunter will be sending out, um, a survey for us for, for twenty twenty-two priorities that we will need, uh, you will need back within the next two weeks, definitely prior to March first, our meeting with.
I'll put all of that in the email.
And the only other one is you will send it back to him, and you guys will return those surveys in a timely manner.
Are there any other, um, items? I know.
Uh, study the text amendment, research it. I mean, I know that's not, but please, like, to be efficient, I mean, look at that, look at surrounding ones, ask me questions, that's why I'm here, like, um, feel free to reach out to me, be like, hey, you know, what, just once again, if you don't remember, just ask me, like, what municipalities are researched, I've got some, and, um, but, but yeah, I definitely, that's gonna be kind of the highlight of our March meeting and to get through.
Okay. Um, let's go around the, the Zoom table or the WebEx table. Melinda, do you, what are your, uh, comments before we close out?
No comments.
Great. Kent?
Wake up.
All right, we'll come back to you. John Jones?
Uh, uh, before the meeting started out, I apologized to Kelly for not being there, and I apologize to all of you. And I told them that hopefully in March, uh, the other resident of my household will have uh, her health straightened out enough so that I can join you there. And, uh, I, I really miss being there. So, you know, hope to be there in the new village hall as far.
Oh, wow.
Yep. Awesome. Well, we hope she feels better, John. Rich? Rich, do you have any comments?
Uh, I echo, uh, John's sentiment, looking forward to holding the meeting in the new village hall. And, uh, just want to get a thank you to staff for all the hard work that you do.
Um, Ken? Okay, uh, Bob, oh.
Ken? That was a good meeting, excellent meeting, good topics, and, uh, look forward to getting, getting with everybody and getting the rest of the council members in to talk with everybody once. I get the advantage to be able. I get the advantage of being able to be with you folks, so that was a great meeting today.
Thanks, Ken. Uh, Bob?
That was Bob.
Oh, that was Bob?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That was weird. Sorry, I didn't, it sounded like, I was like, that doesn't sound like Ken's voice, but okay. Um, all right, uh, Mike?
For Austin, no comment.
All right, uh, yeah, uh, John, we hope you're back with us soon, but, you know, go easy on your, on your bride. Uh, no comments from me, thank you guys, appreciate it. Um, do we have a?
I have a comment.
Oh, you have a comment?
Yes, I do. Uh, turn in your code of ethics forms and your state of economic interest forms before I have to beat down your door. You, you did, you're ahead of, you're ahead of the game. You have, uh, until April, and then I start showing up.
All right, um, uh, can we get a motion to adjourn our meeting?
I moved to adjourn.
All right, can I get a, all second? All in favor of adjourning our meeting, please say aye.
Seven fifty-two.
Thanks, everyone.
All right, thank you, guys. Stay safe, take care, stay healthy.
Adios.